It being six o'clock, I'm going to call this meeting of the Guilford-Gilton Joint School Board to order. Could I get a certificating?
Yes, the meeting was posted online on the school district website as well as in the schools.
Dick said ask everyone to stand for the pledge. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next up is the approval of minutes from our last joint meeting with the Gilton School Board on October 5th.
Our motion to approve the joint meeting from October 5th of 2020.
I'll second.
Seconded by Adam. Any discussion? All in favor? Signify by raising your hands so we can see. It looks like it's unanimous. Thank you. Next up is the first of two public comments. If you'd like to speak, please state your name, approach one of the microphones, please state your name and address. This agenda item is intended to give Gilton and Guilford citizens a voice and the Guilford School District an opportunity to hear from you all directly. Please note this time's not intended for question and answer. Questions about programs and otherwise can be directed to respective administrators during the day. But please approach the next one if you have a comment.
Good evening, School Board members. My name is Dr. David Strang. Before I get started, I'd like to ask, why is our flag in the corner, in the shadows, when people cannot even see it? I think it's unconscionable that the symbol of our country, a beacon of freedom throughout the world, is in the corner, in the shadows, where it cannot be seen. I hope that you change that in future meetings. My name is Dr. David Strang. I live on Cop Road in Gilton. I'm a 1986 graduate of Dartmouth Medical School. I've been practicing medicine for 32 years. I've chaired numerous state boards and committees, often serving as the chair in the process. I'm here to tell you today that masks do not work to stop the transmission of COVID, or any other virus for that matter. There is no study that shows that that is the case. When I was a resident, we were rounding on an inpatient who had been admitted to the hospital with tuberculosis. And before we went into that room, which was exhausted to the outside, much like a room housing a COVID patient would, had ultraviolet lights on the wall to kill any germs floating in the air. Before we went in, being dutiful residents, we started putting our face masks on, exactly the same types of masks that you are wearing today. And the attending physician, a pulmonologist, looked at us with derision and said, "What are you doing?" And we said, "Putting our masks on." And he said, "Why?" And we said, "So we don't get tuberculosis." He said, "Are you kidding me? Do you think that that mask, that little mask, is going to stop you from getting tuberculosis? If it's floating around the room..." This thing is not duct taped to your face. You are not hermetically sealed against the environment. It's going to go right around the corner of your mask, into your mouth, and you're going to get TB. If you want to use a mask to stop from getting TB, put the mask on the patient. In other words, quarantine the sick, not the well. There is no study that today shows that you will stop the transmission of COVID or any other virus with a mask. Please consider that when you adopt your policies. And finally, please, stop using the horrendous term "social distancing." There is nothing social about keeping human beings apart. If you must use something, please use the term "physical distancing." Thank you.
Jade Wood, Chestnut Drive, Guilford. Here I have a petition demanding an end to masking Guilford students in schools. To SAU 73 School Board, whereas I, the undersigned, understand that multiple research reports dating back to June 2020 have demonstrated that children are not affected statistically by COVID-19. They rarely contract the disease, rarely get severely ill if they do, and rarely pass the disease to others. Whereas I believe that requiring our children to wear face coverings all day in the classroom has negative health effects on children, including decreased oxygen intake, decreased carbon dioxide elimination, and increased introduction of viruses and bacteria into the lungs, in addition to severe negative social, mental trauma that may affect our children for decades. And whereas I understand that decades of peer-reviewed science demonstrates that masks don't work and have never worked to prevent the spread of respiratory virus. And finally, I understand that other countries and states who did not close schools and forced masking upon children have had no worse outcomes by any measurable statistics than areas that forced draconian health measures. And therefore, I, undersigned, and I will produce multiple copies of this, as we already have, since going live for just 24 hours, over 120 signers, I, Jade Wood, demand for my children and yours, that SAU 73 School Board end the anti-science child masking policies in all Guilford facilities. And I have a copy for each of you, and I'll be providing more signed copies tomorrow at the office. Thank you. I hope you don't think I'm being reckless by passing out papers in front of you, but...
Thank you for the...
Good evening. My name is Kristen Marshall, 26 Knollwood Drive. First, I would like to congratulate and thank the School Board, superintendent, principals, teacher, and staff for all that you have done this year to keep our children in school full-time and the countless hours that you all put in to contact tracing, phone calls, emails, and safety measures. We are an anomaly in our small town of Guilford, and we have proved there is a way to give the children of this district what they deserve: full, in-time learning in a school environment with their friends and teachers. It is time now, though, to push once more to unmask our children in schools. As we have seen, the cases and hospitalizations are at an all-time low. Every person over 12 years old has been given the opportunity to be vaccinated. Nearly every other establishment has dropped the mask mandate, including restaurants, bars, box stores, libraries, and supermarkets. Our children can go anywhere they wish without a mask, yet they still have to wear them in school. What common sense does that make? What are we doing to these children, and more importantly, what are we waiting for? What other box has to be checked to finally say, "No more masks in school"? We have abided by the mask mandate for over a year now, and our freedom of choice is being impeded on. We, as parents, have the right to decide what is best for our own children. Please give us back the power as parents to decide. We are doing a real disservice to our children. We are covering their noses and mouths where they breathe. We are making them fearful of a virus that has never affected children the way it does adults. The weather last week and these last few days have been brutally hot, and there is no air conditioning in the Guilford Elementary School, yet we continue to make the children suffer. I personally have called my daughter out of school three times now for her safety in these extreme temperatures. Please consider dropping the mask mandate tonight and putting the decision back in the hands of the parents where it belongs. Let's go out on a high note here, Guilford, and prove again that we are leaders and we are proactive in protecting our freedoms as well as our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Matthew Wood from 193 Chestnut Drive in Guilford. I don't have a lot prepared, but I have a severely asthmatic daughter. And to the point where, for everyone to understand, to do the Guilford Gauntlet this past week, she had to have someone run with her just to be sure. So it's a pretty severe case. And I know you give the option to have the children at home, but let's be honest, we went through everything we did from March to, what, June last year, and it didn't work for our children. It didn't work for several parents. So we chose to go along with the mask because that was the best for her education. But now, over time, we have learned a lot more about the virus and the masks and to what the last person had said, "We can go anywhere we want." I haven't worn, I think, worn a five-months' worth of that. In the last three weeks, I've had no reason to wear a mask. I've gone out, it always made me wear a mask, I haven't got COVID, not that I'm in that risk age group, but nor is my child. So now with the temperature being 90 degrees, I mean, it's above 90 degrees, we now have to decide, are we going to send our children to school and make them suffer? I mean, I will wear a mask for a half hour, then I start touching it. At that point, I know little kids are touching their masks throughout the day. It's uncomfortable, and then they add the heat to it. That's just absurd. So they're touching it. So if it's for the safety protocol of we're trying to keep the virus away from the children, whether they're touching their mask. And we have them playing sports inside, they're going to gym. My daughter was going to do a camp this week here in the high school, but she had to wear a mask inside. And this is just getting to the point where, when do we stop and use common sense? I think a lot of us, not everyone's wearing a mask that's through here. We go everywhere, we see each other without masks. And for the school to not be on board with that, it doesn't, to me, it just doesn't seem... It just, one and two doesn't add up. I think we use common sense, and we think about it. There's no real reason to keep wearing masks. So I'm asking that you guys remove the mask mandate. Manchester did today, for those that aren't aware. Manchester removed the mask mandate. And I just think it's the logical thing to do at this point. We're past that. All of this, we're moving forward. So that's all I have to say, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Skip Shea, because that's what Superintendent Biper called me in response to my right-to-know request. Today, I am Mr. Shea. I had asked a question of the board when I sent in my last right-to-know, which I'm going to answer for you because nobody asked me back. And this has to do with an incident that happened a couple of years ago during my last year on the budget committee. And we were doing the administrative subcommittee, myself and Chan Eddy, who was the liaison from the budget, from the selectmen. And Steve Tucker, at the time, the curriculum director, was proposing a new fifth-grade math program. And I immediately started saying, "Well, how are you going to know which program is better? The current one or this new one? How are you going to set up your experimental group versus your control group? What are the metrics for the current program against which you will be measuring? And what are you going to set up for metrics for the new one so that you will know which one is better?" Mr. Tucker, at the time, had no answer whatsoever. He looked rather flustered, rather surprised at what can I, being engineers, are quite used to this kind of talk. He said nothing. And then finally Superintendent Biper said, and this really astonished me, and I just couldn't believe it, he said, "We will know that the new math program for the fifth grade will be a success because in seven years, we will have higher graduation rates." I was literally gobsmacked at that, that a superintendent, earning the salary and benefits that he is right now, would put out such a lackluster and rather oafish response to what I thought was a rather valid question. Since this is not the public time for questions, I will withhold my questions until the second one. Would I be able to ask questions at that point?
Public comment is just that, not for Q and A.
So you are returning back to the years-ago policy of the School Board by which people like I, who do not have kids in the school, have no recourse to my elected representatives in order to seek redress. Is that true? Because I can't go to a teacher, I can't go to a vice principal, or a principal, assistant superintendent, or superintendent. You folks are my only source of seeking redress, and now you just said, "I can't."
I think you've followed the direct policies by filing some right-to-know requests recently, and I'm confident that we've been responsive to those right-to-know requests.
No. The superintendent has done nothing. He sent me, I asked specific questions. He sent me two documents, of which none of them, of the 90-odd pages plus, answered a single one of my questions. This is worthless. So where do I go? I even asked you, is this the workmanship that the School Board wishes to be known for? And I didn't get a response from any of you. So I am stuck here standing with no way of getting answers to my questions because you're shuffling that responsibility off to the superintendent, and he's just blowing me off, which is not the first time. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
I bet you're not.
Any other comments?
If I may, Gretchen, real quick, I just, I'm curious too. So this isn't a Q and A. Like he's saying, when does the public have the opportunity to come to their elected officials? As a board, right, not as an individual? If it's not this meeting, then when is it?
My understanding... My understanding is the questions that were received, we provide the information that is provided, that is asked, has been asked. And this is the only example that I, since my time on the board, this is the only example where I've been, as a board, have heard us accused of not being responsive to questions and answers. And I did ask for a tally of time spent on these right-to-know requests to be started. And I'm confident that we're being responsive to them, that we're following and providing what is asked. And so far, I think I've been told that we've spent at least 20 hours of manpower, including going through right now, I think, over 250,000 emails.
Then you're doing it wrong. You should have no more than a 2% to 3% hit rate.
I don't want to get too far off course here. Again, I'm trying to, well, I'm trying to drive down...
May I just interject one moment here? I was at the School Board meeting when the board decided to choose the New Hampshire School Board Association policy that codified that public comment was only supposed to be commented, there would be no back and forth. This was several years ago. It's recorded, and it's up on YouTube. And I was astonished that elected representatives decided to segregate themselves from the public. So as Mr. Sam Borgner's saying, those of us who are not in the school system, but we are taxpayers, we have no redress. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just to finish, I feel, you know, I don't want to be here any later than anybody else does, right? I know sometimes these public comment sections can really persist and go on for hours, right? We've been here till midnight before. And I'm not saying we've got to get into, you know, drill down into the nitty-gritty details, but some sort of question, and maybe outside of, I'm hearing a little feedback, just in general, you know, it's put out to the public that it's not a Q and A. So a lot of people don't feel like they can come here with questions, you know, general questions that they want to ask their elected representatives. So I don't see it as a problem. And again, we're not going to get it, if it's going to turn into a back and forth where it's going to take too much time, then we can follow up and maybe set up a meeting. But for somebody in the public, they should have complete access to be able to come and ask any questions of us, and that's where I'm at. So I don't, it sounds like, man, you've got something to...
Because mainly you have to remember, though, Paul, that there's five of us up here, and you're answering for all of us together. So we have our email addresses out there, so that way those can be sent to us. We do sometimes direct, especially if it's an administration thing, for an administrator to be answered those questions. We can easily have a meeting to go over every single question that's being asked of us. But we do have to remember that, yes, they can ask you a question off to the side, or this is truly not intended for the questions and answers to answer those things because you do sometimes have to do the research that goes along with it. And one person answering is answering for the entire board.
100% agree that one person shouldn't answer for the entire board. And I'm not saying that if we're proposed a question, that obviously, okay, I need to go research this question. We need to be able to gather the data and figure out what our response is going to be. But I think just to say to the general public that, hey, this isn't a Q and A, I think sends the wrong message. And I think we should be saying, hey, listen, if you have questions, bring them to the School Board meeting. You may not get them answered tonight, but at least feel comfortable enough to come and have access to us because really, outside of this meeting, yeah, we individually can. But this is the time when we are the board, when we are as one, and not that we're going to give off individual answers to somebody, but at least it's the redress. It's the ability for them to have access to it. So again, I'm not trying to say that this should turn into, you know, answering every little detailed question that anybody off the street wants to ask, but I do think it should be something that we at least make ourselves available to. That's really all I'm saying, so...
And the point I was making is, in my five years now on the board, this is the first time I've been accused of not getting any questions answered, so...
And I'll follow up, and I'll agree that it's, you know, you go past maybe five, six years, the previous board, and, you know, not throwing out names, but there was a sense that you could not approach the board. And there were meetings that I was present at that people were shouted down and basically told to go away. And I agree, this board, I haven't seen it in my short tenure here. It seems like we have definitely allowed people to come up and speak for as much as they want, really. I mean, we really haven't put any time limits on anybody. And I just want to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page on that, that technically, okay, maybe it's not, you know, a Q and A where we're going to give you your answer that night, but certainly, you know, don't feel like you can't come to us and ask these questions. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that, that's all.
Any other comments? Thanks, Kyle.
Hi, I'm Michelle Tyler. I live at Guilford, South Jersey. Just to make a quick comment on what you guys were just talking about, I think it is a valid point that some of us don't know whether it's worth coming to a School Board meeting or whether or not we will get any feedback at some time. I know I have sent emails in the past, and I have gotten some responses, and I've always been encouraged to come here and comment. But then, it's always what's going to come out of that comment or question. And maybe in addition to doing meetings or minutes for the meeting itself, maybe also like a reminder that kind of goes through any questions that you received through email interactions, and if you did come up with some answers or, you know, if it was closed out, then, like you said, we already started the tally, so maybe it would be something to share, so people know that, you know, there is something happening and they're not just up in space and nobody's looking at it. Sorry.
Thank you.
But anyway, so my comment tonight is, like most of the people up here. So I just, I wanted to thank the School Board, the staff, the administration. Everybody has been amazing this year and really did so much to keep our kids in school, and it means so much to me personally. I have three small children, and like Matt was saying, it was not working remote for me at all. I have one daughter that hid under a table half the time, and so that's just amazing. And we've really proven together that it can be done safely. You know, we really knocked it out of the park. And regarding the policies for both masks and quarantine, I just, it's time to move forward. It's time for these policies to change. We're in a different place than we were in the fall. Today, I checked the stats. There are zero active K cases in Guilford as of right now, according to the WMUR. You know, the cases in general in the state are way down, and we need to look at all the facts and our experiences here in our district and our community and really do the right thing for our children. With that said, there should be no reason why we cannot move forward with the community and let families decide when and if it's appropriate for our children to wear masks. There are no mandated masks in public now. It's optional. Our children are out there on masks because it's not mandated. And this is a public school district. Therefore, the mandate should be removed, and masks should be optional. Regarding quarantine, I would really like the School Board to look at our numbers for quarantine. How many positive cases have been transferred in the classroom? If this is a small percentage of individuals, I'm asking that we immediately stop following the guidelines. Let us make a more educated decision based on our experience here in Guilford. Eliminate the close-contact quarantine altogether and start treating this like we do any cold flu or a case of strep throat, which somehow my kids actually got this year, but they never got COVID, so I'm not sure how that works. But with an amazing job the school nurses have done in collaboration with our parents, keeping kids home when feeling ill, there's no reason we cannot head in this direction. So tonight, with the School Board, regardless of how you feel individually about the mask mandate, this is a choice that should be given to us parents, the parents that you all represent. We know better than anyone what is best for our children. And please consider taking this action now as well as changing the policy on quarantine. These policies no longer make sense and are no longer in our children's best interest. The scales have shifted in a more positive direction, and it's time to join them. Thank you.
Good evening. Madam Chairman, members of the two SAUs. My name is Joe Haas, H-A-A-S, josephskaas@hotmail.com. And I live in Gilton, Mountain Road. And I wanted to talk first on some replies to some of the people maybe, or just two people. We'll get back to the original postings. I think what you said, that there was a posting at the school in the singular, that means this school, but what about the Gilton and the website? I presume it's only the Guilford website? Because let me tell you the story. I mean, this is like the Q and A. I don't expect the answer to that. I just want to say that I had a run-in with problems in Gilton. I called there yesterday. Joyce was usually around, wasn't around. Dexter was around. I said, "Is there a public input section for the joint meeting?" And I get a warped answer. You know, it says at the Gilton one afterwards, there's one at the end. And I bet you those have passed. I mean, usually, there's one in the front and one at the end, or the middle. And I called yesterday, and I visited today, and I pressed the buzzer, and Stephanie came on. She said, "I'll bring you out the agenda, hang on." So I could come on, and I got the agenda for Gilton, the one after this. I said, "Where is the one for tonight, for the joint?" And she gave me a phone number to Guilford, one for Kim. She was very nice, she gave me one through an email. And I finally got one, like at the 11th hour. It would have been nice, I called Volconia Daily Sun. They said, "Well, if you had notified us today before, we would have had a guy over there to cover the meeting." So that's not being covered, I guess. I don't know if somebody's here or not. But I thought I relayed my disgust with trying to get the agenda because it's not on their website. What else if it is? Dexter doesn't know where it is. And then Joyce, who was supposed to be back today, was not. Or she was, but she was busy or something. And that's just one of my two comments on what the... And that's just one of my two comments on what people have said. The first man that spoke said something about you quarantine the sick, not the well. And this is why I came here tonight, because another analogy to that is you subsidize the poor, but not the rich. I go back to volume 55 of the New Hampshire Reports, page 503 and 505, 1875. It's the Brentwood School District Case Number Two. This was in the old days, where they said, if the poor man or poor child behaves himself honestly and uprightly, the state owes him the services of the schoolmaster and charges the property of its more favored children in order to pay his debt, which is an exemplification of the law of Christian charity. That's roughly the exact words in paragraph two of page 505 of that volume of the New Hampshire Reports, meaning the decisions of the New Hampshire Supreme Court. And since then, it's gone out of whack. I mean, years ago, it was the, the swept was, I think, five dollars per thousand. Now it's down to two dollars, I think. And I've been around to the Andrew Jawanski, John Tobin information sessions. I've been to three of them, Concord, Rochester, and Wolfboro. And what I'm getting at is, I asked that it be put on the agenda that you talk about the Conville case, Contuket Valley, which Michael Terry, the attorney of Manchester, is handling for the districts down in the Keene area, not districts SAU. And finally, I guess, the Clamont case, he started it all, did join up. So I don't know, there's probably five or six of them. And the bottom line is, well, let me go back to another case, the Londonberry case, 2006. You read on page nine of 19 of that, on the internet version, there's a V in the middle of the page, right above there. It says, no doubt, the DRA, let me back up. You all, the towns vote, they say, well, we want this in our mind. Let's operate the schools. Then you as the SAU, you have the MS-22 form that you send through the portal to the DRA Department of Administration, and they then give a tax rate to you. That's under the old statute. It says, once the tax rate goes to the board selection, they shall send that over to the tax collector to bill and collect. Then there was another statute that says you may do that. It's enabling legislation. It's your choice whether you wanna do it or not. But the Constitution, Article Five, Part Two, says that tax rates and taxes are supposed to be reasonable and proportional. And that's the bottom line. There's no more, supposed to be no more rich town, poor town. And the state is supposed to be supplying all this money. And just my own personal opinion, it's three quarters of the tax goes to the school. If everybody comes down, residential and business, the solution is businesses pay 7.7% business profits tax. I said, just go up on that tax to equal or approach what they're paying now. And you give that statewide tax a true way to go to the state, not just be kept at the town. You know, like Norton, I mean, they have all that, that's one example that Jawanski did. So since, the first email that I sent to the SAU 79 was to John Foster, when he was there. And that was January of 19, 2019, January 2019, John Foster. And then Adam knows, he gets all these emails. When somebody sent emails here just a few minutes ago, the only two that I got is comments@SAU73, and then the SAU73. I only have two. I don't have, their website is better than yours, I think, to that degree, because you individually write either any of these other people, I guess, it has to go through channels to get to somebody. And I have been to their meetings a few times, and I tried to get that on the agenda, it just wouldn't go. They wouldn't talk about it. So there's an Article Eight of the New Hampshire Constitution. So it was in 2018, I guess it became effective in 2019. There's only been one case where that has been tried out. That was when the House sued the government. And then, that was on the federal funds. It says in Article Eight, a resident of the town where they reside, being eligible to vote, they don't have to be a registered voter, just of age, those three categories, if those exist, they can sue in the court that for the town or municipal subdivision, like your subdivision, the SAU, that to do things right. And what I'm saying is, I was at the board selection meeting last night in Gilmington. They said, the Article Eight says you can sue on who approves it or who spends it. And when this money is being accumulated from everybody's property tax, that approval that they give to the town treasurer to send a check over to you, that's where I told them, no, do not send anymore. Help them, do not feed the beast. You're the beast. You are barking up the wrong tree. Tell the state to give you the money. Nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and zero cents. It was the two bills in 2019, ITLs. But that's just the adequate amount. I mean, the actual is twice that. They're working on it down in Keene, on the actual amount. So that's number one. Then number two is, when you get the money, once you spend it, spent, past tense, that's when a citizen can come forward and say, no, that was ill-gotten gains, and to stop it, they can sue. So I'm telling the SAU of Gilmington that if they ever get that next check, that, you know, they're gonna see me, they're gonna have to see me in court. And one last thing is trying to get this information, you know, the payment schedule. Chris Hay did an excellent job, you know, in the old building at the four corners of Gilmington. I'd walk in, Mark McGwire would walk in, you know, with a dog would be there, or somebody. I guess it was Rachel had the dog. But anyways, I would ask questions, because I didn't know about the payment schedule. I mean, who knows, on the right to know, what to actually ask, or what type of document? I mean, you have a little trit chat with the people. And that's what I had with her, and I finally got one. She would send me one, and I'm still waiting for the last one. So that's my right to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a few rhetorical questions for you and a couple of comments. What is different about this meeting Gretchen, Kirk, and a few others of you than was it your budget meeting, or you didn't wear masks? Why not? Just rhetorical. The other question is, Pama. I was wanting to be of the median, but no, this is not intended to be funny, and in fact, it's quite serious to me. My other question to you, rhetorical also, is that here in this MOA that you will probably use as a crutch to deny our children the right to breathe in their classrooms, while you can go in your office by yourself and catch a fresh breath of air with AC? I just wanted to point out here, I see that it says that all people, including but not limited to teachers, parents, administrators, vendors, contractors, other employees, and students, shall be required to wear a mask at all times while in the school building and on school grounds, with the only exceptions during designated mask breaks, physical education classes. Okay, not sure when the last time you were allowed to set foot in your own schools was? Because even as resident-elect of the Volunteer Steering Committee, I wasn't allowed to volunteer in the school this year. But I just challenge you to ask, did the kids unmask during PE this year? I think you'll find that there's a high roll on that. And also, as my husband pointed out, our daughter, who by the way, was going to participate in the volleyball camp, funded by a grant that was for COVID relief for children who were traumatized by the COVID-19 pandemic, are in the gym every day since yesterday, wearing a mask while they play volleyball. Now how disgusting is that? Sorry, I'm becoming emotional. Okay, final thing. So my question that's rhetorical is, how are you gonna reconcile these lies to children like her? Okay, see that face? That's what's going on. You weren't wearing masks at the Budget Committee, but you're wearing them now. Why? And why does this MOA that you might use to block our attempts to free our kids from being muzzled every day? These are lies. This is a lie, and I wanna know how you're gonna reconcile that. Re-elected you.
I would like to correct your statement. I was one of the school board members that attended the budget hearings. I did wear my mask because notice on the doors of the time hall said, "All masks should be placed prior to entering the building." I wore my mask the entire time. So before you make a blanket statement, I think you really need to stop and say some of us did protect.
I think she's referring to the meeting the other night, and that's a fair point. I, in my public, in my public life, I'm vaccinated. I am happily, I'm happy to not wear a mask when it's not required. But I also am an elected representative who signed a memorandum of agreement for this school district.
It's only required if you're requiring it.
What's that?
It's only if you don't wear unless it's required. It's only required if you're requiring it.
I, can you refer me to this memorandum?
Do you want me to give you a copy of the memorandum?
I have, I think I have a.
You didn't read it, Gretchen. You didn't. Go to paragraph six and look at the last line of paragraph six. Turn on your microphone and stand up and tell us what it says.
I have it right here, and it's underlined. I have the same copy. Could we just talk about the memorandum of agreement? I can read the section right here. Both parties reserve the right to revisit the regulations if state or federal guidance changes over the course of 2020, 21 school year. A school board vote would need to happen in order to make any agreement upon changes.
We're looking forward to that vote.
So what I'd like to, what I'd like to ask Kirk, though, is this agreement was negotiated in the same manner that folks are complimenting us on getting folks back to school, kids back to school in the fall. This agreement was the, was the reason that we were able to make that happen for the community, because we negotiated in good faith an agreement that expires on, I believe it is June 30th.
June 30th.
This expires on June 30th. So if we were to break this agreement, we need to go back to the bargaining table with the teachers' union to renegotiate this, to get that to happen for the rest of the school year.
Just for the record, would you read the couple of sentences before that, dealing with change in guidance? And for the record, I will state that guidance is not the same as actual law. It is just guidance.
I'm happy to provide copies of this. I don't think I need to read the whole thing.
Nope, just a couple of sentences ahead.
Which sentences? Two sentences ahead?
I have highlighted it on the copy I gave to you.
Well, I'm just gonna go back two sentences. "Social distancing shall be required at all times by all people in class, in the schools and on school grounds. Administration and teachers shall respond according to the statewide response steps to any failures by students to any of the aforementioned safety protocols. Administration shall respond accordingly to failures of staff to comply with the aforementioned safety protocols with disciplinary measures." Those the two sentences you were looking for? Those are the two before that. But anyhow, I'm not going to get into a Q and A, but I am confident that if we were to make, I'm happy to entertain a vote to renegotiate this if anyone would like, but it's my understanding that we can't make a unilateral decision regarding this MOA tonight.
If it's not, it says it's a vote. It says at the bottom that it's up to the school board vote. You guys and the school board vote.
The beginning of it says, "This memorandum of agreement is entered into by the Guilford School Board and the Guilford Education Association. Hereafter, the term teacher will refer to any employee, including the current collective bargaining agreement between the board and the GEA."
But you enter them together, and at the bottom, there's a synonym that says, "If things change, the vote can happen." So why is the vote not happening tonight?
Gretchen. Just a quick word.
Yep.
Just a quick question. My assumption, and I don't know how you guys do your reading, it's more different. In a situation like this, typically what we've done in Gilmington is, if the board makes a recommendation, we would either affirm or reject it. If a board member wants to make a motion about a topic, they are so welcome to do so, but there's no guarantee it will pass. Meaning, I guess that's where I'm looking at, is the difference. But I see what you're saying, is this is not, this is not a, in this room conversation. But, you know, I think if someone, if you have board members that are interested in making a motion with the understanding that you can talk to GEA, or that's your decision of the board, not, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's not, and I'm not saying this extensively, but it's not like the audience's decision. If the board, if someone on the board makes a motion, it either votes and affirms, or if there is no motion made, then there's nothing to be had. It's a rule of order.
I can make one suggestion. It says, "Both parties reserve the right to revisit these regulations if state and/or federal guidance changes." A school board vote would need to happen in order to make any agreed-upon changes. So that means you would have to negotiate a change with the other party, and once that's agreed upon, then you would have to vote. I believe what the people are asking is for you to have an affirmative vote to enter into a renegotiation with the other party. That's what they're asking.
And we're happy to, and just for background, I'm happy to entertain the conversation, but just know, and to the same point, that I was happily not wearing a mask at that meeting the other day. I'm bound by what I signed then. That's why I'm wearing a mask. I don't wear a mask to the grocery store. I don't, I'm perfectly comfortable with that. But understanding that I followed, I'm following what I signed in this building. All that to be said, we've done our due diligence. I asked this question. We did reach out, too. And my understanding is we'd have to go to the table. So if someone would like to make a motion to renegotiate, by all means. But bear in mind that negotiations with a union are gonna take some time, and we have nine days of school left, so.
Yes, I agree, Gretchen, and I do appreciate, you know, your common sense approach and your listening to us. But the fact is, is you guys already breached this. The kids are wearing masks in gym. So what's the difference around the playground and not social distance, and that's school grounds? So what's, where's the common sense in this? If you're gonna breach it, then it's obviously flexible.
Related to, does anyone wanna entertain a conversation?
Well, I have a question first. Kirk, I emailed you last night asking, and Gretchen may be sure to see, see you. Maybe she was starting the process earlier. Has the union taken a hard line on this? Or is there the ability for them to say, hey, like Manchester just did, way more densely populated than we are, can at least they take the masks off when they're at their desks?
I have talked to, there's three presidents, one in each building. They have not pulled their membership, so they would have to have a meeting with their membership and certainly pull their membership. So I don't know exactly where the entire membership stands on that question.
Did you get any sense from the presidents? I mean, do they think they have enough votes to, you know, agree upon it? I mean, I think at this point in the game, yeah, there's only nine days left, but each day ninety degrees with no AC for those little kids in elementary school is a tall task. I mean, we had, what, seventy-five kids call out yesterday? That's not productive either. So I'm just wondering, what is your sense with the presidents? Do they feel like that this could change?
I think the, my sense is that they would like to keep the masks on for the rest of the year. But I don't, that's just a sense.
Sure, and I'm not asking for, you know, affirmative, just curious as to what your conversations were like with them.
Yep.
But I just wanna reiterate, I did not come here with a mask lightly tonight.
Well, and the thing about the MOA, to my understanding, because I raised all these questions in that September meeting in the belly of the SAU office, that this would not be applying to the general, this MOA is in conjunction with the CDA and has no bearing over our meeting. that this would not be applying to the general, this, this MOA is in conjunction with the CBA and has no bearing over our meetings, has no bearing over somebody walking across the field, you know what I'm saying? So, that, that was specific to the CBA, which is school, kids, not us at this meeting, so that.
That's fair, but I also feel I'm expecting my kid to come into the classroom and, and my nieces and nephews who all are in these schools. I don't make these decisions, and I don't think anyone sitting at the table, we all have skin in this game. I, I just feel like I'm trying to lead by example, given the fact that.
Hey, that's a fair point, and, and, you know, that's, that's obviously your, your, uh, your decision to make. But it was always my understanding that that MOA never applied to us, it only applied as far as the CBA was concerned. So, that's why I'm not wearing one now, because I don't wear one anywhere where I go now. So, it, it just, not that it even matters, but I just wanted to throw that out.
And trust me, I, I think we, we went through the, the hoops. I think this, um, as I think Kirk will bring up in, as he moves forward, um, this expires, all of our summer programming, all of that stuff. The plan is to, as this, this MOA expires, so too does our mask mandate. It's, um, I've been pushing the, I've been bugging him all day. So, this is not something that we necessarily want to do, but at the same time recognizing that through this process, we've tried to be pragmatic, meet the needs of a lot of students. Another thing that came up today from a parent who had reached out to me as well was that they have a type one diabetic student, and they sent their student to school. She was thrilled that her, her student had their second COVID shot today because, because they got it as soon as they were allowed to. Um, and she felt very confident sending that child to school this semester because, um, her child was able to have, um, she was assured that, that there would be masking within the schools, but she's very confident moving forward, two weeks out of her COVID shot, that, um, that student does not, is, she's okay without masking. And so, I'm also trying to listen to those, those parents in this situation as well, who sent their kids to school expecting this mask mandate to be in effect through the school year. So, um, all that to be said, does anyone want to make a motion?
Do, do we, do we need to make a motion to go forward with the GEA to say, hey, tomorrow, can we get a, you know, roll call vote ASAP and potentially make something happen before the end of the school year? I mean, that, I, I, I would be happy to make that motion.
It's just going to get hotter.
Um, uh, we're still, as Nin pointed out, we've kind of gotten off of public comment, so let's listen to public comment, and then I'll close that.
Fair enough.
Is it the sense of the school board that a child coming to school involved in an act of civil disobedience by not wearing a, a mask would be left alone? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, it's, oh, Danielle.
Danielle Walter, um, Chair of Valley Road in Guilford. Um, thank you to the board, teachers, administrators, and maintenance workers that work very hard to keep our children in the school this year. Last year, my child struggled tremendously with remote learning, and I was grateful to have the school open full-time with the extended day. I was even happier that throughout the year, we didn't make drastic decisions to close after the holidays and start that trend of closures. I do support unmasking our children in Guilford schools. These past couple days, my son has come home tired, bright red in the face, and does not understand why he can go to a local brochure for strangers without a mask, but has to wear one around children he sees every day. I grew up in Guilford, I love this community, I love everything it has to offer, but let's take a step into normalcy and give the parents back their freedom to make their choice to mask their children. I understand the parents that are sending their child to school with type one diabetes, but that child does have the option to wear a mask. Um, our children should not have to.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with public comment? All right, I'll close the first public comment. Um, in follow-up to that, does anyone want to make any sort of motion?
Yeah, um, so just trying to figure, okay, so a motion to approach GEA tomorrow as far as negotiating the MOA to rescind, or at least make the masks optional, um. Is that, I mean, it's kind of a, I wasn't really thinking about making this type of a motion, so how?
Is it M A, not M O A?
It's not a memorandum of agreement.
MOA, it's in the.
Okay, so I'm trying to read it, just so you can hear it right.
So, the motion on the table is to, um, ask Kirk to reopen negotiations regarding this?
Yes.
MOA?
Yes, regarding the mask, uh.
Making masks optional.
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
I'll second that motion.
Any discuss, oh, so it's seconded by Audra. Any discussion regarding that?
Um, the only thing I want to, because of how it's listed, um, in there as far as like the, the physical activities and stuff, I just want to, can we reach out to the teachers and make sure that they understand? Because it's my understanding also that I was not the expectation that they're inserting themselves, that they can have those great masks and stuff. I don't want kids passing out in the middle of the field, um, let's make sure that's.
Oh, sorry.
I love what you're saying.
Sorry. Um, I want to make sure that the teachers are adhering to this memorandum as far as like the physical assertions and things like that. If they are outside, then they, yes, and they, um, they're spacing, they shouldn't be wearing that. Let's make sure that the teachers are actually doing that. And likewise, maybe, and maybe just re-follow up to see if there's anything else within that that is not being followed. Because I was not aware of that either. All right, I'll call for a vote, um, regarding the motion on the table. All those in favor? Is it just Guilford?
That should be Guilford's issue.
Is it, is it district vote or is it more of?
It's a, I mean, it would affect its.
Like policies.
We do vote on policy. So, if one's a policy, then it's a.
I'm happy to have your vote if you want.
Okay.
My feeling is that the high school, well, it's just why, they should be voting that.
All those against? So, one against? So, we'll look into that tomorrow.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you for that. Superintendent's report.
Gretchen?
Yep.
I don't mean to, I don't mean to interject, and I don't mean to, um, but the vote that you just took allows, allows for the conversation with the Guilford Education Association. So, if they agree, does that mean that the, that the board has given approval to that agreement at this point? Or do you need to take action that would accept their vote? I mean, if, 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 do I make it sound?
That's a fair point, um, I guess.
Because all you, all you've really done is to maintain the conversation. What happens with that vote of the Guilford Education Association?
I guess we'd need another motion then on the table.
Yeah, no, that's a great point, and I'm glad you're here, because some of us are new at this. Um, yeah, so, uh, do you want me to amend the mo, we already took that vote, so that's done. So, I guess I'll make another motion then, that if GEA does agree, then we are agreeing right now. But that is our permission to say, yes, if they agree, we agree, the MOA changes to allow masks to become optional. Does that make sense? That's what we were going, yeah, so, okay, so that's the motion, that we would, we are saying, yes, if, so as soon as they agree, it's, it's done.
You know what I found that I have with that, is if they put other things in there that they want to do.
So, strictly to the ma, the paragraph for the masks, or only, the motion was for masks to become option, or optional. So, the, the second motion is to, if, if they agree, if the, if the GEA agrees, that mask can become optional, and solely that is the one line of the whole MOA that we agree to make those changes. Clear as mud, but.
And I think this, um, sort of highlights the fact that why we had sort of, um, well, common sense would say one thing, that we had sort of not put this as an agenda item, knowing that a reopening of an MOA could well take more than the last nine days of school to,
Absolutely.
to, um, to make happen. So, it was sort of more of a pragmatic decision versus a, um, an opinion decision, so.
Second.
Uh, second by Nin. Any more discussion on that? All those in favor? All those opposed? So, it looks like there are three against, or were you? What were you? Oh, sure, yes, okay, so there were two against. All right, so the motion carries.
So, I'm looking at, uh, article number six only, right? When I, uh, talked to.
Correct, yeah, paragraph six.
Paragraph six, yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, onto our second public comment. I just had a really quick question about. You just, I mean, and again, just.
Yeah, sure, Kristen Marshall, Nova Drive.
Yep.
Um, I know you have listed the Zoom and the phone number to listen to these at home. Um, and I know in a few meetings past, comments were given, I guess through the computer, and someone would read them aloud, but I haven't heard anything in the last two or three meetings where anybody from, is, is anybody from home commenting on it?
You know what, that's a good point, and thank you for making note of that to me. Um, that's my error for not asking during public comment, if there was any on there. So, but thank you for bringing that up. I think we did check the last two, but I have not asked tonight, so double-checked. Thank you for bringing that up. While we're checking on that, Skip.
Sure. Skip Shad, Guilford Glen Hurley. Given the seriousness of the mask discussion earlier, I felt that perhaps a little levity should be injected. Over at redstate.com, there is this post stating, "Philadelphia's naked bike-like returns, but to prevent the spread of germs, nudists will have to wear masks." Can you imagine how that mask-on, mask-off meeting would? It's not like they'd least get a little bit of mask. All right. Um, a couple of questions. Uh, Policy JAB, um, my last set of, uh, right-to-know requests had to do with Section C names and pronouns. And, uh, after Nin and I had a back-and-forth at the policy meeting, where I was told that she felt threatened when I said I would take the board to court, and I said I felt threatened because my elected representatives were not following the law. Section C was basically removed, so that the coercive speech, which was against, uh, First Amendment rights, was removed. But there is still a little problem, and I'm looking for clarification. It has now been reduced to one sentence. A student under this policy should be addressed by a name or pronoun that corresponds to the gen, student's gender identity that is consistently asserted at school. My question is, is the word "should" be used, uh, in the voluntary sense? Yeah, you should do it, but, you know, we can't force you, or is it being used in the imperative? Which means you shall do this, which was really going back to the coerced speech. So, I'm just hoping that somebody could clarify that, and perhaps in the policy itself, in parentheses, either say mandatory or voluntary. So, that people would understand when they need it, because it is subject to, uh, redefinition by the person. So, that was one thing. Um, going back to our earlier, uh, discussion, uh, seeking redress from my elected representatives. My last right-to-know has to do with, basically, uh, let's see. The Policy JAB Part Three, Section Eight, Privacy. And it comes down to the same principle that the Section C did earlier. We are not a home rule state. Any board or any subdivision of the state in a home rule environment allowed to do anything that they want on almost any subject that they want, but we're not that. We are a Dillon's Rule state, which means that all subdivisions of the state, of which school boards are one, must be authorized by legislation or the legislature, creating legislation, in order to have the power. Governments have powers, individuals have rights, to be able to do anything. I had submitted an RTK going through the privacy, because it seems like you are, you have the power to give a minor child a new right that is not enumerated anywhere. So, I am questioning that, and that's when I got the return from Superintendent, uh, Bightler that basically said nothing at all, where I lost the papers into the air, because he had decided to give me a new name. And none of that paperwork answered my specific questions. So, let me repeat, are we going to play this game all over again? Neither of the two documents attached that Bightler sent in response to my most recently submitted right-to-know demand answered my actual questions. Throwing answers from someone else's right-to-know demand that don't pertain to mine is both insulting and starting yet another pattern of not acting according to the law. Avoidance of direct questions, throwing non-responsive verbiage as if it was chaff, is both unacceptable and a display of sloth fest, or worse, a display of disrespect. It does not reflect well on the board having delegated this work to your subordinate. So, I asked that my right-to-know be resubmitted and taken under, um, review. I have not yet had a return from that, and I asked that question back in May, on May eleventh. The five business days, according to RSA ninety-one A, have well passed. So, my question would be, and this would be something I, you probably would take up on your own, but when am I going to get a response? Again, the board is not following the law. The actual part is lying to parents as far as privacy is concerned. Transgender and gender non-conforming students have the right, again, do you have the power to grant a right? I would maintain that you don't, because you're, we are a Dillon's Rule state. To discuss and express their gender identity and expression openly, and to decide when and with whom, and how much to share private information. When contact, and this is the part that you just cannot accept a new policy from the New Hampshire School Board Association and automatically assume, oh, this has been legally clear, because as in Section C, it wasn't, and it's not, it is unconstitutional. And I'm very happy that you guys changed it, I really am. When contacting the parent or guardian of a transgender or non-conforming student, school personnel should use the student's legal name and pronoun corresponding to the student's gender assigned at birth. Yeah, assigned at birth, you don't assign somebody sex at birth, it's derived from conception. I would appreciate using the right verbiage. But still, what goes on is that you are with, you are basically lying to parents, either by commission, by deliberate action, or omission, by refusing to act at all. I would maintain that this would be contested in the courts, in fact, it already is, as illegal. My right-to-know was asking, where does this school board derive the power to lie to parents? The answer, if there is such, would simply be to merely point to that New Hampshire RSA that says, yes, you can do that. The flip side of this is that you cannot do it, because you cannot show anyone what legislative action, what RSA gives you that power. Therefore, by that dint, you cannot do this part of the privacy theory. So, I am going to ask that my RTK be reinstated, and that you show that you have the power to give a new right to a minor child and not keep the parents in the loop. I understand that schools are in part in loco parentis, but to cut them out of the loop as if they are guilty of something already, where that minor child is going through a traumatic time in their life, to automatically assume that parents are guilty? That's beyond the pale. So I expect that within five business days, I will have an answer to my question. Now, somebody brought up the email. I filed that right-to-know for the email log from the district, because Superintendent Kurt said there was, there has been no communication whatsoever. I find that extremely hard and difficult to believe. So, if you've ended up with two hundred fifty thousand responsive records after I stated, restated my original right-to-know, this is what I'm looking for. And then stated, here's the way to go about doing it. And nobody called me to ask, hey, skip, this is getting a little out of bounds, can you help us out here? I would have been glad to have done it, but nobody wanted. Now, the question is, who's at fault for that? Silence, just a little.
Well, I, I'd just like to make some mention to that, because I have had conversations with other board members as well as Superintendent Bightler about this issue. Um, I thought I remember in our last, um, correspondence that went out that we had responded to him, that we had told him. You had that, you had gotten a response, maybe not the answers you were looking for, but you did get a response from the district.
I got an email with two PDFs, one of which was addressed to Mr. Shea, and I went through and-
No, 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 the second one, unless I'm miscrossing signatures.
The second one being?
Being the emails that you requested.
I thought I heard a word.
Okay, so maybe I misinterpreted, I thought I read in one of our-
But this is the first time I have heard, someone's, I, Gretchen, I don't know whether it was you or Janine. Somebody said two hundred fifty thousand records, that's the first I've heard of this.
I, I'm confident that Mr. Bightler sent you an email letting you know that we're working on that right-to-know request, correct?
I got the working on part, but not the, oh my gosh, what is this doing? You could have asked me to say, look, is this really what you want? And I, at two hundred fifty thousand records, that's nuts. The filter, just, just on a statistical basis, I don't think you would have been able to come across more than two to three percent of being responsive records to what I was looking for. Given the intent of the original RTK, which I asked, because I didn't get an answer, to resubmit. And the email log request was due to that non-responsive reply that I got from Superintendent Kurt. Now, Brenda runs a tight ship, she is a treasure for this district. I would be happy to talk with her, so when she goes through lots of three sixty-five stuff again. Or to be able to pare down the interim stuff that she's got now, I'd be happy to do that. Like I've said before, I'm semi-retired, I've got, I don't have anything ready to do. I can tune this, but, you know, if you send me two hundred fifty thousand, fine, I'll stuff it on my server and I'll go through it myself. It's kind of nuts if you guys are still going through and getting the raw numbers. But it really comes down to, with all of that being seconded or tertiary. The important part is, when you see these policies being rolled out, you need to ask, as board members, don't depend on, on the staff. Take your legal counsel with several grains of salt, but look at this policy and say, warning, how could this go wrong? What is going on with respect to the legal authority that the board has? Folks already said, you can't spend all this money on the windows, you don't have the windows already to do that. Comes to your policies, the same thing happens. You can only do what subdivision of the state is allowed to do by authorizing legislation. That's basic civics, this is not a secret. Look at the policies of Go, does this violate the constitution, does this violate legislation? You can't do it, so why file a complaint? Any questions with me about this right?
No questions from us, thank you for yours, but once again.
Thank you.
Just before you'll step up, if anybody owns their windows down, I don't know if you're being attentive, but it is pouring. I have an old sleepover there. Um, those are so, those are bad, so I just wanted to say thank you. I probably, I'm a bad PTA member, because I know I come to two of these things, and, uh, I think as president we're supposed to come to a couple more, so I promise to be better next year. And I just wanna thank you guys, I know some of you had sleepless nights and it was a really crappy year and you guys said butt, so, very bad that you had to open that. Um, but I just wanted to make a recommendation for next year, um, my daughter, my son had two or three quarantines this year. And my daughter had three, so, not a good deal, totally get the quarantine thing, a hundred percent on board with it, um. The only recommendation I have is, most of the times it was great, if the entire cohort or the entire class was in quarantine, it was a hundred percent, the teacher was right there. All was well, you know, they had the Google meets and they had their assignments and they talked to their teacher and there was all kinds of communication. The problem was when my son tested positive and we all ended up getting it, but our tests claimed that myself, the husband and my daughter didn't get it. That put my daughter in a twenty-day quarantine, that was nine instructional days missed, would have been fourteen luckily, or unluckily for us, because it was her annual vacation. So she did, um, she already missed those five days. The problem was, she emailed all her teachers, I'm the mom at home going, email your teachers, email your teachers, I know not that many moms like that. Um, we got responses, oh, I hope you feel better, I hope you're not fanning, all the great things. That, she got wonderful assignments, um, a lot of her other teachers, she's a good creator, um, a lot of her other teachers I got, or she got, um, checked the website. Fantastic, but it wasn't updated, so my daughter spent the nine days of her instructional time, she probably had. Half hour, forty-five minutes worth of work, and she missed all of that schoolwork. Now my daughter's a great student, top of her, whatever. She's not a slacker kid, she's not, she loves learning, she was mad at me for dismissing her yesterday. So, um, I just, my recommendation for the district is when you're doing your staffing and planning for next year. My understanding is there, there is no remote next year, which is great, um, but maybe having a liaison or one staff member who, when it's not the whole cohort. And there's one kid in eighth grade and there's one fifth grader, they're not all gonna have parents like me who are like, did you call them, did you call them, did you have them? So maybe having one person who they could reach out to, who could be the liaison between all the teachers, because some of her assignments were, get the word of the day. Well, it was written on the board, that's super helpful. She wasn't there for fourteen days, so, um, that's just my recommendation, I know you don't need to hire all the remote teachers, but maybe hiring one. Remote person or liaison or something to that for the, all the districts, I mean, or all the schools, I don't know how you work it out, but that was my only recommendation, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Alright.
I have one request, super great. I just, Jade, Jade Wood, Chestnut Drive, Guilford, New Hampshire. Um, I would like to know if, um, the memor- the, excuse me, the memorandum of agreement was made public to any parents. And if not, because I couldn't find it on the S U webpage, perhaps it should be in the future, you know? Because this is a lot of information that affected us, and we put a lot of emphasis, emphasis on trust. And our relationships with you, and we want transparency. I mean, privacy is for citizens, transparency is for government. And so, um, I would just caution you to be a little more discerning when you don't make this information public to people. Other than that, thank you so much for all of your patience with me tonight, I'm gonna go celebrate my birthday.
Thank you. And I'd just like to close this meeting before we go to public, um, to non-public, just thanking the full board that's here tonight, um, for this last year. And kind of, um, you've sat through numerous meetings like this, as we should. Um, everyone at these tables, I think without, without fail, has skin in this game, whether we have students, um, grand, we have kids, grandkids, otherwise. Um, everyone, I think, works full-time as well, um, everyone really does their very best to be as transparent and responsive as we can. We're not perfect, and I think, um, the passion that people bring to these meetings is important, and we respect it and are happy to have it. But also, we hope, just like we try and offer all of you, that you offer us some grace in moments that we might not have hit it out of the park. Because we are just doing our best, and so I think as you hear when we get some of these public comments. When we, when we deal with each other with assuming a little good faith in one other, one another, I think it goes a long way. And it, it helps us to wanna do better and be more responsive, um, when we're, we kind of treat each other with mutual respect, so.